And then we will start the meeting. Good evening. I would like to call this special meeting of the Issaquah City Council to order at 6:31 PM. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings, so both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. Also, tonight, the mayor will be joining us around 7:00 PM and is running late, so I am starting the meeting off and will turn it over to her when she arrives. So, at tonight's meeting, we have one agenda item, which is a quasi-judicial closed-record decision on the Issaquah School District's Providence Heights Combined Elementary and High School Campus Project. Please note that because this is a closed-record quasi-judicial matter, the city council's decision is limited to the record developed by the Development Commission, and no new public comment or testimony will be accepted this evening. So with that, we'll start with our one and only agenda item, which is AB 7835, Quasi-Judicial Closed-Record Decision on the Issaquah School District Providence Heights Project. So again, the purpose of tonight's meeting is for the city council to deliberate and make a decision on the master site plan, MSP 20-00001, the site development permit, SDP 20-00001, and five administrative adjustments of standards, AAS 20-00012, AAS 21-00001, AAS 21-00002, AAS 21-00005, AAS 21-00006, for the Providence Heights Consolidated High School and Elementary School Campus. The order of tonight's meeting will be the appearance of fairness disclosures, which are necessary due to the quasi-judicial nature of these proceedings, a staff presentation outlining the project, deliberation by the city council, which may involve the city council choosing to convene in a closed session to consider this item, and finally, council will render a decision this evening via resolution if they are ready to do so. If not, the meeting will be continued to another date. So, the appearance of fairness disclosures in quasi-judicial actions are those actions which determine the legal rights, duties, or privileges of specific parties in a hearing. Per state law, quasi-judicial decisions require certain disclosures by members of the decision-making body, in this case, the city council. So, city clerk, would you please proceed with questioning the city council regarding the appearance of fairness disclosures?
Good evening. For the record, this is Rachel Turpin, the city attorney. Hello, council, staff?
Can you speak up a little bit?
I sure can. I can speak directly into the mic. I'll just move it closer to me.
Or bring it closer.
Closer to me. I'm short, so have to do that. Good evening, city council, staff, members of the public. This evening's decision is a quasi-judicial decision, which means that it is a matter that is governed by what's called the appearance of fairness doctrine. Under the appearance of fairness doctrine, proceedings are required to be fair, both in fact and appearance, which is similar to a courtroom setting. This means that what are called ex parte communications are prohibited. Ex parte communications are communications that are outside of the hearing or the meeting between the decision-makers, which in this case is the city council, and either opponents or proponents of the project or the matter at hand, which in this case is the Issaquah School District project. If such communications have occurred, the record of the substance of those communications must be placed on the record in order to allow other interested parties the right to rebut those communications and essentially challenge the council members who engaged in those communications. The test of a potential violation of the appearance of fairness doctrine is whether a disinterested person, having been apprised of the totality of a decision-maker's personal interest in the matter being acted upon, be reasonably justified in thinking that partiality may exist. Decision-makers who have a personal interest, who have prejudged the issues, or have partiality in the matter are disqualified from participating this evening. So, right now, the city clerk is going to ask you all a series of questions that you must answer truthfully.
All right. I'll read the questions and then look for and keep my ears open for any responses. So, with regards to the outcome of this proceeding, do you have a personal interest, financial or otherwise, in the outcome? I hear no response. Does your employer have an interest, financial or otherwise, in the outcome? There's no response. Do you have any familial, social, or business relationships or connections with any of the parties or non-parties who have an interest in the outcome? Okay, I see three hands raised. Go ahead. We'll start with council member De Michelle.
Thank you. I have a social relationship with Issaquah School Board Member Marnie Moraldo. I am the board chair, and she is the executive director for Influence the Choice, a youth substance abuse prevention nonprofit organization. As elected officials, both Director Moraldo and myself have strictly observed the rules regarding quasi-judicial hearings, have never spoken about any aspect of the project, and have always had at least one other individual, and often many others, present during our Influence the Choice meetings. So, we have never been alone together since, both before and since the site plan application was filed. Our relationship has not biased me for or against this project, and I am confident that I can remain impartial in these proceedings.
Thank you. Council President Walsh?
Thank you. I want to disclose that I have children who are students in the Issaquah School District, but this has not biased me in any way for or against the project, and I'm confident in my ability to remain impartial.
Council member Hunt?
Thank you. I have a child who is a student in the Issaquah School District, but this has not biased me in any way for or against the project, and I am confident in my ability to remain impartial.
Council member Joe?
Thank you. I have one child in the school district and another child that's doing remote learning through a state-accredited program. But this has not biased me in any way for or against the project. I'm confident in my ability to remain impartial through this process. Also, I want to reveal that I have a social relationship with the superintendent of the school district. We are both in the Rotary Club together. I have never spoken to him about this project, and he has not approached me in any way, shape, or form about this project. All of our conversations, to the best of my recollection, have been social in nature, and this project never came up in our conversations. So, I believe that it has not biased me in any way for or against the project tonight, and I'm confident in my ability to remain impartial through the process.
Thank you. Are there any other council members with the disclosure? All right. The next question. Do you have any special knowledge about the substantive or the merits of this proceeding which would or could cause you to prejudge the outcome? I hear no response. Will there be any prospective employment for you or your family as a result of the decision? Hear no response. Do you own or control property within 300 feet of the subject property? Hear no response. Have you had any ex parte communications regarding this project? See some hands raised. Let's start with council member Martz.
Thank you. Two things. First, several times over the past two months, I have been approached by parishioners at St. Michael and All Angels Episcopal Church here in Issaquah regarding this matter before us this evening. In both cases, I stopped them before they had been able to convey any information to me and said I would not be able to discuss the matter in any capacity with them due to the quasi-judicial nature of the proceeding. Conversations did not bias me concerning this project, and I am confident I can render an impartial decision in this proceeding. Secondly, on April 18th, 2022, I received a letter from the law offices of J. Richard Aramburu, P. LLC. The email contained an attachment entitled "Comment to ICC.PPUA Re-ISD." It was immediately apparent to me that this email and the letter likely related to this project, which is a quasi-judicial closed-record decision. Accordingly, I did not open or read the attachment. I have not been biased by the unsolicited receipt of the letter, which I did not read, and I am confident I can render an impartial decision in this proceeding.
Thank you. Council President Walsh?
Thank you. On April 18th, 2022, I also received a letter from the law offices of Richard Aramburu, P. LLC. That email contained the same attachment entitled "Comment to ICC.PPUA Re-ISD," and it was immediately apparent that it was related to a quasi-judicial matter, and so I immediately emailed our legal team to make sure that we should not read it. I have not opened the attachment, and I have not been biased by the unsolicited receipt of the letter, which I didn't read. I'm confident I can render an impartial decision in this proceeding.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Hall?
Thank you very much. Similarly to what you've just heard, yesterday on April 18th, I received that same letter from the law offices of J. Richard Aramburu, P. LLC, which contained that same attachment, "Comment to ICC.PPUA Regarding ISD," and it was immediately obvious to me that it was a form of communication that I'm not allowed to open and read, as we're in a quasi-judicial closed-record decision, and I do not believe that I've been biased by the unsolicited receipt of this letter, and I'm confident I can render an impartial decision in this proceeding. Thanks.
Thank you. Council member Ray?
Thank you. On April 18th, 2022, I received a letter from the law offices of J. Richard Aramburu, P. LLC. The letter contained an attachment entitled "Comments to ICC.PPUA Regarding Issaquah School District." It was immediately apparent to me that this email was likely related to the project, which is a quasi-judicial closed-record decision. Accordingly, I did not open the attachment. I have not been biased by the unsolicited receipt of this letter, which I did not read, and I am confident that I can render an impartial decision in this proceedings.
Council member Hunt?
Thank you. On April 18th, 2022, I received a letter from the law offices of J. Richard Aramburu, P. LLC. The email contained an attachment entitled "Comments to ICC.PPUA Re-ISD." It was immediately apparent to me that this email and the letter likely related to this project, which is quasi-judicial closed-record decision. Accordingly, I did not open or read the attachment, and I have not been biased by the unsolicited receipt of this letter, which I did not read, and I am confident I can render an impartial decision in this proceeding.
Council member De Michelle?
Thank you. On April 18th, 2022, I received a letter from the law offices of J. Richard Aramburu, P. LLC. The email contained an attachment entitled, quote, "Comment to ICC.PPUA Re-ISD," unquote. It was immediately apparent to me that this email and the letter likely related to this project, which is a quasi-judicial closed-record decision. Accordingly, I did not open or read the attachment. I have not been biased by the unsolicited receipt of the letter, which I did not read, and I am confident I can render an impartial decision in this proceeding.
Council member Joe?
I have a question for our city attorney. How far back do contacts need to be revealed? In other words, when was the record closed? Let me just ask it another way. Was it closed in August of 2021?
You would want to reveal any ex parte communications you had after the project application came in.
Which was what date?
Ms. Dollywall, can you remind me?
September 2020? Okay. So, first, on April 18th, 2022, I received a letter from the law offices of Richard Aramburu, P. LLC. The email contained an attachment entitled "Comment to ICC.PPUA Re-ISD." It was immediately apparent to me that this email and the letter likely related to the project, which is quasi-judicial and a closed-record decision. Accordingly, I did not open or read the attachment. I have not been biased by the receipt of the letter, which I did not read, and I am confident I can render an impartial decision in this proceeding. Secondly, during the campaign of...
Council member Joe, you don't have to disclose communications you had prior to...
Election.
Yes, correct.
Fantastic. Thank you.
All right. Let's move to the next question. Do you believe you can sit and hear this matter fairly and impartially, both as to the respective positions of the proponents and the opponents of this matter? Might you unmute for... Yes?
Yes.
Acknowledge yes.
Yes.
I do.
Yes.
I do.
Thank you for those who are just able to hear you. All right. So now, we have some questions for the audience. Based on the information that you just heard from the city council who is making the decision in this matter, do any of you, either in-person here or attending virtually, wish to challenge the participation of any council member based on the appearance of fairness doctrine? If you have an objection to them participating in the proceedings, you can, if you're in the room, you can raise your physical hand. If you're participating virtually, you can raise your virtual hand or send me, the host, a chat message. When I call on you, please state the name of the council member and the reason why you believe they should be disqualified from this matter. I'm going to take a moment here to monitor our virtual attendees. All right. I see at least one hand raised. Going to wait just another moment. And I see a hand raised in the room as well. So, let's start with the first hand I saw raised was from our virtual attendee, and then ma'am, you are welcome to come forward. So, Mr. Aramburu, I see your hand raised. Just a moment here. I'm going to make you a panelist so that you can unmute and address the council. Mr. Aramburu, just a reminder that because we're not taking public comment on this issue this evening, please keep your statements limited to the reason you believe the council members to be disqualified.
Okay. Thank you. Can members of the council hear me?
We can.
Good. Thank you very much. I have two or three objections based upon the appearance of fairness doctrine. First of all, I have received an announcement sheet from the Issaquah School District, which was dated October 28, 2001. Excuse me, 2021. And in that announcement sheet, it states that Member Weaver, Director Moraldo, and Superintendent Ron Thiele met with members of the City of Issaquah leadership at 5:00 PM on October 19, 2021 via Zoom. Director Weaver shared what they discussed, and one of the items they discussed was progress on district construction projects, including hiring an outside expert consultant as the district's State Environmental Policy Act responsible official for the high school for elementary 17 project located on the Providence Heights property. That appears to be an undisclosed ex parte communication with at least two members of the district board and the superintendent with unnamed members of the Issaquah City Council, which appear to be the leadership. So, we would object to those members of the council who have not disclosed this meeting with the Issaquah School District that occurred on October 19, 2021. Would you like me to state my second objection, or would you like to resolve the first one now?
Let's go through them all, please.
Second objection is that I have recognized that several members of the Issaquah City Council have identified that they have children who are enrolled in the schools of the Issaquah School District. I believe that to be a conflict of interest based upon family relationships. The proposal before you now will provide schools for district residents, and one or more members of the Issaquah City Council may have children that would attend those schools. I believe that's a conflict of interest, and that those members who have children in the Issaquah School District should recuse themselves from these hearings. The third matter has to do with the record before the council. Numerous, the record here is substantial, more than 6,300 pages, and video materials from the public hearings that were held particularly on March 3rd, 2021. I believe it would be a violation of the appearance of fairness doctrine if one or more council members did not review the videos of what the public said at the hearing and what the public submitted to the Development Commission during the March 3rd hearing. And failure to review and be familiar with those materials in advance of making this decision would violate the appearance of fairness doctrine. So, those would be my three objections to council members. I'm ready to provide more detail if council members or staff have questions of me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aramburu. Ma'am, I know we had someone in the audience who'd indicated, you're welcome to come up to the dais here.
I rise on a similar issue as Mr. Aramburu, is that there, as much as I like to see parents of students actively involved, I do think that those students could in future benefit from these schools, and that would be a conflict of interest in the decision.
Ma'am, can I have you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Carol Schmidt, Providence Point resident and schoolteacher at Bellevue High.
Thank you. Are there any other individuals who would like to challenge the council's participation, a council member's participation? All right. I don't see any other raised hands in the meeting room. I also don't see any other raised hands among our virtual attendees.
Okay. So, at this time, we have received objection to the participation of certain council members, and so I will ask them if they wish to respond. The council members may either refuse to disqualify. A council member who does not feel that their participation in the vote reflects any bias for or against the project, and that they can decide impartially, can refuse to disqualify themselves. They can either rely on what they said earlier during disclosures, or essentially restate what they said then at this time. Or, you can disqualify. A council member who disqualifies themselves must leave the hearing room and may not participate further concerning the applications. And so...
You have one point?
Yes, Council President. I'm sorry for the interruption, but I do see that I've received a chat message from someone else who may wish to make a challenge. So if...
Okay. Let's hear that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, I see someone whose display name is MG. I'm going to make you a panelist now so that you can unmute and make your challenge if you'd like. MG, you've been elevated and should be able to unmute.
Thank you. Mary Duratus, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Resident of Issaquah, and I object based on the press release that was on the Issaquah School District website regarding the meeting in October between staff and city council and school district. Thank you.
Thank you. And Council President, I don't see anyone else wishing to make a challenge.
Okay. So, I was going to start with the October meeting of 2021. At that time, the leadership was council member Hunt and council member Ray, and so I would like to give each of you an opportunity to respond regarding that meeting.
Thank you, President Walsh. To the best of my ability to remember, I do not recall discussing this project in any way. So, I, and I also am not familiar with this press release. I can look through my notes to see if I have any record, but I do not, I believe that we did not discuss it, and I also believe that any discussions we had with the school board would be about other issues of joint interest and would not bias me on this project.
Thank you, President Walsh. It was a matter, and it still is a matter of standing course. Once a quarter, Issaquah City Council leadership meets with the school district to talk about a wide range of common interest. I do not recall this meeting or the topic, and I don't believe that whatever was, the discussion of that day would influence me or bias me or make it so that I could not make an impartial decision in this matter.
Okay. And then going through the remainder of the items, I believe we heard several instances of individuals talking about the three of us who have students at the Issaquah School District. So, I'll call on myself first and then go through between the other two. I absolutely have two students at the Issaquah School District, and there is no way of knowing whether or not they would or wouldn't attend this particular school. But just like anyone here who might have a child at any point or adopt a child, there, that is a citywide set of benefits, I guess I would say. So, there, I do not believe in any way that having a student in the school district has biased me for or against this project, and I do not believe it would keep me from being impartial in the ability to decide this, on this project. So, I'll give you a moment to get settled while we continue through the appearance of fairness, and I will go to council member Joe. Do you want to respond on that item?
Thank you, Council President Walsh. I do have one child in the school district and one child that I kept out of the school district for safety reasons during COVID, and she is doing remote learning. I don't believe that having children in the school district in any way would bias me for or against the project, and I believe that I'm confident in my ability to remain impartial and decide the issues before the council tonight without fear or favor. Thank you.
And council member Hunt?
I have a child in the Issaquah School District, but as I stated earlier, I do not believe that this biases me for or against the project, and I believe I can be impartial in this matter.
Okay. And I believe there was one other... Okay, and I believe there was one other objection. I am not remembering it off the top of my head from Mr. Aramburu, clerk or, yes?
He, I, as I understood it, he was stating that if a council member did not review the public comment provided in the record, that that would be a possible disqualification.
Well, first of all, I disagree, but I believe that everyone reviewed it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Then it's not an issue.
Yes.
Okay, so at this point, I believe we have heard from all of the council members related to those particular objections that were heard from the public, both in person and virtual, and all of the council members have stated the reasons why they feel they will refuse to disqualify. So are there any other things that need to happen within this appearance of fairness doctrine at this time?
No.
Okay, so Mayor, are you ready to take over on this one particular item?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Council President, and apologies to the group and to the audience for being tardy this evening. Looking at the script, it appears that you might be moving on to stop presentation at this time. So next, we will receive a presentation from Christina Hayworth, Planning Consultant.
Christina, I've just given you those presentation privileges.
Great, thank you so much. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, I am sharing my screen right now. Can everyone see it okay?
Yes.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, so as stated earlier, tonight's meeting is a closed record review. Review is limited to items already in the project record. That includes the content of this presentation. No new information is presented or added to the record with this presentation tonight. I will be going over the project, talking a little bit about the timeline, the permit process, and next steps, reviewing the decision criteria, and then opening it up for City Council committee. The property is located in the northern end of the city in the Providence...
One sec, I'm going to go to the clerk. Clerk, is it appropriate for someone in the audience to do a point of order?
No, that's a right of the council.
Okay, thank you. So we will not be recognizing the point of order.
May I continue?
Let's have the city clerk or Rachel give an answer.
The mayor does not have to attest to fairness because the mayor is not going to be decision maker in this proceeding unless there is a tie, in which case the mayor then will do the appearance of fairness disclosures at that time.
Thank you, Rachel, continue.
Thank you very much. Okay, the property is located in the northern end of the city in the Providence Point neighborhood along the jurisdictional boundary between Issaquah and Sumamish. The site access is from 228th Avenue Southeast, and the city of Sumamish owns this roadway. The site was formerly developed as the Providence Heights College, which has since been demolished. The property currently consists of a central clearing as shown in this aerial photograph, some residual concrete, and a water tower. Access is from two places on 228th Avenue Southeast. The first is a little bit north of the center line of that, or center of that eastern property line. The second is at the southernmost tip of that eastern property line. There are several critical areas on site. Wetland B, which is in the southwestern portion of the property, this is a category four wetland, it's quite small. Wetland C, also a category four wetland located in the southern portion of the property along the existing access road, Providence Heights Loop. Some manmade steep slopes along 228th Avenue Southeast and at the southern end of the frontage, and a critical aquifer recharge area along the northern frontage of 228th Avenue Southeast. The project proposal consists of a new consolidated high school and elementary school campus. The high school, relocated in the southern portion of the property, will serve a maximum capacity of approximately 1,823 students and 150 staff at full buildout. The initial construction includes accessory athletic facilities, and future phases include a 10,000 square foot addition and up to four portable buildings. The elementary school, relocated along the western portion of the property, serving a maximum capacity of 744 students and 75 staff at full buildout, includes an accessory outdoor playground with the initial construction, and future phases include up to four portable buildings. The project also includes related site infrastructure, like roadways, non-motorized pathways, utilities, and other kinds of operational features like the bus loop. I'll now go through the project components. So item number one is the high school. 1A is the addition, the 10,000 square foot addition that I mentioned on the previous slide. 1B is the location of future portable buildings. The elementary school is shown as number two. The future portables are shown as 2A. In the center of the property is the stadium and track. There's a grandstand on the west side and visitor bleachers on the east side of the track, scoreboard to the north facing southward. A ball field and complex and plaza, so that's a baseball field and a softball field around a central plaza identified as number four in the northern portion of the property. Number five is the central parking garage with rooftop tennis courts. Number six is the bus pickup and drop-off loop and parking area. Number seven is the entirety of the green shading. This is the proposed vegetated buffer surrounding the entire property. And then number eight is the primary access, which is a signalized entry that is also associated with some additional frontage improvements and roadway improvements. Number nine is an emergency vehicular access, so this is used only by emergency response vehicles such as those owned by Eastside Fire and Rescue. As part of the project, the applicant is requesting five administrative adjustments of standards, all of which are contemplated in the Issaquah Municipal Code and/or the Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards where applicable. AASs are usually decided by the CPD Director, but they meet the criteria for consolidation in IMC 18.04.100B and are therefore elevated to the Level 5 process with the master site plan and site development permit for a decision made by city council. The first request is to reduce the minimum FAR from 0.75 to 0.42. Just so that we're all on the same page, FAR is the ratio between building square footage and the developable site area on the property. A higher FAR means that there is more building square footage on the site. A lower FAR means there's less building square footage on the site. FAR, as you can see in this diagram, uses total square footage of the building, not just the footprint. This adjustment is allowed by code when the reduction is less than 50% and is for operational features or academic curriculum. The proposed reduction results in less building mass on the property than would otherwise be required. The second requested AAS is to reduce the minimum tree retention requirement from 25% to 23%. This is allowed by code specifically by reference to the Central Issaquah Design Development and Design Standards, the CIDDS, when meeting all applicable criteria. The project complies with applicable tree retention requirements, though, retaining about 26% of the trees on the site, and so therefore an AAS is not actually required. The third request is the authorization of shared parking facilities. The applicant's proposal is to share onsite parking between daytime school uses and after school events. This reduces the total amount of onsite surface and structured parking needed for the project, and is allowed by the Issaquah Municipal Code when a parking study supports the sharing scheme, as is the case for this project. Requirements for daytime parking are met under the proposal, and ISD has to implement, based on the recommended conditions of approval and the transportation impact analysis and special event management plan in the case of overflow during particularly popular events. The fourth requested AAS is relief from providing continuous non-motorized walkways on both sides of certain internal access roadways that are identified in red here on the diagram on the screen. So this is along the east side of the parking garage. One walkway would be provided along the east side of the road, which is closer to the trees. And then along the east side of the high school building, they are requesting in a certain area to have only one side of the road have a walkway, and then along the actual high school building itself, not allowing pedestrian access in that area. This is important for pedestrian safety due to the utility enclosure along the southeastern portion of the building. And then the last requested AAS is to reduce the total number of non-motorized street frontage connections from eight to three. There are two connections at the main entry and one barrier-free connection at the south end of the property. This request would improve tree retention by limiting grading and impervious surfaces in the forested hillside along 228th Avenue Southeast, and wouldn't negatively impact site accessibility because pedestrians would continue to arrive from, or would, maybe not continue, but would start to arrive from the north or south after project development. The permits that you're reviewing tonight follow the Level 5 review process, which means that staff does an initial technical review and provides a recommendation to the Development Commission. The Development Commission holds a public hearing, takes public testimony, closes the project record, then deliberates and makes a recommendation that is forwarded to the city council for review. City council decides, using the closed record, to make a decision. Once a decision is made, that decision is appealable to King County Superior Court. The decision is based on criteria of approval outlined in the Issaquah Municipal Code. Staff reviewed the application materials against all applicable criteria of approval for the various permits. For the master site plan, there are 13, and I'll refer you to the staff report, page 154, for an analysis of those criteria. The criteria range pretty broadly from compatibility with adjacent uses to phasing plans, internal design continuity, vehicular and non-vehicular circulation, and others summarized here on this slide. Staff found that with the recommended conditions, the proposal complies with all 13 criteria. There are three criteria for the site development permit, and the analysis of those begins on page 161 of the staff report. Those criteria include compliance with the comprehensive plan, compliance with the code and other applicable standards, and compliance with the design criteria checklist that is adopted as Appendix 2 of Chapter 18.07 of the Issaquah Municipal Code. With the recommended conditions, staff found that the proposal complies with all of these three criteria. The criteria of approval for the AASs vary in number and location throughout the code, and so I'll just walk through them as quickly as possible here. But if you've got questions about where to find more information within the project record, please let me know when we get to Q and A. For the floor area ratio reduction, there are three criteria of approval, starting on page 37 of the staff report, including that the reduction is the least amount necessary for operational functions in academic curriculum, that the reduction is no greater than 50% of the minimum FAR, and that the reduction will be equal to or better in fulfilling the purpose and intent of the community facilities' facilities standards. With the recommended conditions, staff found that the proposal complies with these criteria. The criteria for tree retention modification are in the Central Issaquah Development and Design Standard, CIDDS, Chapter 10. The analysis of this begins on page 90 of the staff report. There are six criteria, one of which is optional, and based on the current project proposal and submitted ARBRIS information, the applicant, the project, complies with tree retention requirements without the need for an AAS. There are seven criteria in two different code sections required to share parking, including providing adequate documentation to support that reduction. There is a parking section in the transportation impact analysis, and as conditioned, we found that the proposal complies with all of the applicable criteria in both code sections. There are three criteria to modify requirements for non-motorized walkways, including consistency with compliance and code requirements, reduction of impacts, compliance with the intent. There's this fourth additional approval criteria. These are optional, none more specified by the CPD Director. So as conditioned, the proposal complies with all applicable criteria in the code. The same criteria apply for the reduction of public street frontage connections. Again, no additional approval criteria were specified for the request, and as conditioned, we found that the proposal complies with the applicable review criteria. Based on the applications, the submitted plans and technical reports, all of the attachments in the project record, and the analysis presented in the staff report, the Development Commission did recommend approval of the master site plan, site development permit, and all five AAS applications subject to the, I believe it's 57 land use conditions that are presented in the findings, conclusion, and recommendation. And so, from here, this concludes staff's presentation. It's now time for the city council to deliberate and make a decision on the applications based on the project record created by the Development Commission. As presented in the agenda bill, council's options are to approve with conditions as recommended by the Development Commission, approve with revised or additional conditions, remand one or more of the applications to the Development Commission for further consideration, or deny one or more of the applications. Again, the decision once made is appealable to King County Superior Court. And with that, I'll take any questions you've got.
Thank you, Christina. Looking to see if there are any council questions. So at this time, I will open up the floor for council deliberations, and because the city council is making a quasi-judicial decision pursuant to RCW 42.30.140, Part 2, the Open Public Meetings Act does not apply. If a council member wishes to convene into closed session for a portion of the meeting, please make a verbal request, and we will take a brief recess to adjust the room. If council is ready to make a decision, then a council member needs to move to approve the proposed resolution. Council President?
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution Number...
2022-09.
Approving a master site plan, site development permit, and administrative adjustments of standards for the Issaquah School District Providence Heights High School, an elementary school campus project with conditions, and adopting findings of fact and conclusions.
Is there a second? Deputy Council President?
Thank you, I'll second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded to approve a master site plan. Is there any council discussion? Council President?
Thank you. I'm sure we will have further discussion, but I wanted to start out by just recognizing how difficult of a situation this is within a community with all kinds of needs and all kinds of preferences, but at this point, we are reviewing the Development Commission's kinds of preferences, but at this point, we are reviewing the Development Commission's closed record. We are using the information found in that record and within the meetings, which included all of the public comment, to deliberate and make our decisions. So I just really wanted to recognize that within that record, there is exhaustive detail around the important elements of this project. That includes the environmentally critical areas, lighting, noise control, stormwater management, and much, much more. I also want to recognize the intense coordination between the City of Issaquah and City of Sammamish regarding the entrance on 228th for this proposed project and the southeast 43rd right-of-way improvements. This property lies within the City of Issaquah, but the right-of-way is within the City of Sammamish, which brings into account quite a different set of review criteria and information than we have received in the past. So I guess I just wanted to start out recognizing how much intense information there is within this record on all of those very important pieces, which we will then use to deliberate. I could go further, but I believe I'd like to hear from my colleagues and see what kind of commentary we have around now that there is a motion on the table.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Mertz?
I will dive into the deep end of the pool. And first, I want to thank the Development Commission for a colossal amount of work. It shows in the detail of the findings here. I am particularly struck by, I mean, I've seen conditions of approval that have come out of DC reports before. These are a very thoughtful and articulate set of conditions under which to allow for the, oh, the alternative, I'm blanking on the word, but the variants, variations, no, that's not the right word. Anyhow, the conditions are very strong, and I think will be, if this is approved this evening, will be an important part of making sure that this meets City of Issaquah standards. I was struck by the relative good nature of the DC at the end of that March 3 meeting, and the fact that they all seem to be still bright-eyed and bushy-tailed after a long process. And the fact that this was not, in the end, a particularly acrimonious process is very important to me because it speaks to the solidity of their recommendation. You know, we have also had, just like we've had, conditions of approval in the past that weren't this fully formed, you know, we've had things come out of DC, you know, with less unanimity and less confidence, and the fact that they come out after the 6,600 pages of material. As I said, bright-eyed and bushy-tailed and unanimous in their support is extremely important to me. So I thought I would offer that up.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Other comments, other discussion? Councilmember Ray?
I will jump into the pool, too. I want to recognize what Council President Wal said, that this has been a difficult decision and matter all along. When you have competing community needs, it is very hard to come down with something that makes sense. And so I'm very gratified by the work that the Development Commission did, and I'm also was impressed with the community's input. What gives me some, I don't know, it's solace or joy, is that the conditions that were identified were a way to strike a balance between what was possible and what met the needs of the community. So I think that there was a lot of good work done to make conditions on this that tried to ease the impact. And honestly, when I started reading the record, I was very intrigued with the adjustments of administrative adjustments of standards, because I think that those are always a little bit challenging, and I thought that the rationale for them was right on. I mean, it's a difficult thing. I mean, we're bound by the record, and we're bound by the law, and so we'll make a decision based on those factors. So, but mostly thank you to the Development Commission and the public in helping us to move this forward in hopefully the best way possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Other council members? Deputy Council President Hall?
Thank you very much. I also just want to begin, start by acknowledging community participation and engagement in this process. There was an incredible amount of thoughtful comments and relevant feedback from the community as part of this record, and I want to thank everyone who contributed to that record, some of whom clearly, having reviewed the record, clearly spent many, many hours ensuring that their voice was heard, and it most certainly was. So thank you very much for your passion and your participation in the process. I'll be brief after having reviewed the record based upon the criteria that we consider for master site plan approval, alignment with city code in the comprehensive plan, the thoughtful consideration and conditions of the Development Commission, the responsiveness and the commitments of the applicant, and the hard work of staff. Thank you, really, thank you, staff. To ensure that all these things are happening, I'm satisfied with where we're at, and I'll be supporting the motion tonight. I am eager to hear from the rest of the council members and be open if there are any potential changes that council members would like to bring forward. I'm open to hearing that. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Additional comments? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I have some similar comments to my fellow council members, as far as I wanted to take a minute to thank all of the community members who have participated in this process. We are, at this point, bound by the record, and in the record, there is a lot of very thoughtful, very passionate feedback. And as the decision maker, I did read that feedback and take that into account with my decision-making. We do have very clear criteria at this point, which we are bound by laws, as was mentioned earlier, to use as the criteria for the decision-making. So I just wanted to make sure that I acknowledged, however, that there is a lot of information here, and a lot of thought went into it, and it did guide the process of this project. So I wanted to thank the Development Commission for their thoughtful deliberation. I wanted to thank the staff for making it clear why the decisions were being made the way they were being made, and thank again the community. I do have a proposed new condition, if I might make that now, so I would move...
Councilmember, can I get some general comments from the other two, who I think there's only two left that haven't commented, and I'll come right back to you.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. I'll be very brief because I don't want to repeat what my fellow council members have said. I was so impressed watching the Development Commission and the huge amount of work that they accomplished, the thoughtfulness with which they did that, as others have mentioned, you know, no rancor, just very amicable discussions, and very thorough and very clear how they reached their decisions. So just all praise to them, and to Chair Brennan, I thought he did a magnificent job chairing what was a very difficult discussion overall. As has also been stated, we are bound by the record and by the criteria and by the code that is in place, and having reviewed all of that and the recommendation that came to us from the Development Commission, without prolonging it, I would just say that I will support this motion as well tonight. But I just want to say again how neatly and clearly everything was laid out, which is amazing when you think of the amount of material that was here. So thank you.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you, Mayor. Issaquah is a special place where people care, is our motto, and I look across the country and I see people disagreeing and being disagreeable at school board meetings and council meetings, and I just wish that they would watch 30 minutes of any of the three meetings that you had with the Development Commission, with the public. We disagreed on certain topics. We aired those disagreements, but we were not disagreeable. And I think that says quite a bit about our city and the civil discourse that we have in this city, and I would like to hold it up as a model to the rest of the country when we're seeing so much discord out there. As many of you know, I'm an attorney by background, spent 12 years in private practice, and was the municipal court pro temp judge for a time here. And so I'm very aware of following the law and understanding the parameters that I'm restricted to during this process. And so after reviewing everything, I in general agree with most of my other colleagues that this is a well-run process. Within the parameters that we were allowed to review, the conditions are probably the best we can reach, given the layout of the geography there and the other challenging conditions. And so I look forward to a robust discussion about any other changes that might be made tonight, and I'll continue to keep an open mind. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I would move to add one new condition, which would be Condition 58, and this condition would read as follows. "The applicant is strongly encouraged to use materials for artificial turf fields that comply with best available science regarding detrimental effects on salmon habitats to protect environmental quality and to avoid materials containing 6 PPD quenone."
Is there a second?
Second.
Russell, thanks. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion on the additional condition? Council President, I'm going to go to Councilmember Hunt, and then Council President?
All right, thank you. One of the master site plan approval criteria is consistency with our comprehensive plan, and one of our policies within the comprehensive plan, which is referred to in the record, is Policy LUH2, which is to maintain development regulations that promote compatibility between uses, retain desired neighborhood character, ensure adequate light, air, and open space, protect and improve environmental quality, and manage potential impacts on public facilities and services by addressing features such as previous service ratios, and the policy goes on. So the relevant part, I believe, of this policy is the protect and improve environmental quality. There is a lot of information in the record about the potential environmental impacts of this project, and within the record as well, there is information about the best available science regarding recent studies on detrimental effects on salmon habitat, specifically from 6 PPD quenone, and then also tying that back to potential materials that might be used on turf fields, of which there are several proposed in the project. So I wanted to add this condition that the applicant would be strongly encouraged to use materials that would not be detrimental to salmon habitat. There's also extensive information in the record about concern about kokanee salmon habitat, and kokanee is, as is evident from the record, very important to the community, and I would urge the applicants to please consider that in their development of this specific part of the proposal. I also wanted to quote from one of the materials in our packet, which is a project memo, subject Laughing Jacobs Creek Project Discharge, in which it says two things that I wanted to quote. One is that "As a result of the stormwater system, the water leaving the site will be cleaner than the runoff leaving the site in current conditions, and the runoff leaving the project site will be reduced from both the previous development runoff rates and the existing disturbed area runoff as required by the stormwater manual. Based on the above information, the project will have no adverse impacts to Laughing Jacobs Creek and no additional mitigation of stormwater as proposed by this project." So to conclude, I believe that to actually adhere to this part of our comprehensive plan in which we maintain that the project would, that the development regulations would protect and improve environmental quality to maintain that, and also to have these no adverse impacts as it says the project would have on Laughing Jacobs Creek, which is habitat for kokanee, I believe that this condition is important to add in.
Additional discussion? Council President?
Thank you. I appreciate that this is brought up and that we are able to have a conversation about, because this was brought up in the record, and it was a concern of community members. There was a portion of the staff report, and the concern of Laughing Jacob Creek and how that flows to Lake Sammamish. I would ask staff how a condition that says strongly encouraged to use materials, how that comes into effect, and whether, because obviously these are related to whether or not something can get approval, and so I wonder, is that language appropriate, or is there any adjustment there that we would need to make?
If it's okay, may I make a comment? It's very typical to do what Victoria has just done as a Development Commission member, but it is quite unenforceable. So if the council wanted to add 19 of these to get a better product, you could. They don't have to do any of them.
So toward that idea, many of the other additional conditions are enforceable, and so is, I wonder if there is a way to make an adjustment of that toward an enforceable nature, because I think it's a creative potential solution to one problem that was presented in the materials. But just like with the Development Commission, when they were talking through potential conditions, the understanding is, how do you make something that is the most effective toward the idea trying to be created? So I wonder if there is anything that we would hear from staff on potential conditions or language.
Good evening. I did look through the code and did discuss this with staff, and there's nothing in the current code that would allow the city to include enforceable language. The most the city could do here is encourage it.
It doesn't mean you shouldn't. It just means you may not get it. Councilmember Hunt?
Well, thank you. I'm interested to hear what my fellow council members think. I will say that I did confer with city staff, including the city attorney, on this, and so this language, I recognize, it says strongly encourage, and it's a very important topic. So my preference would be that this is what we can do to raise the issue and let it be known to the applicant that this is strongly encouraged by the city because this is best available science. The other point I would make is that this is relatively, this is established science, but it is relatively recent, and code sometimes lags best available science, and that doesn't mean that we shouldn't bring that to the attention of and call out the importance of best available science to the applicant. So my preference is to include it. I recognize the concern about enforceability.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I think it's important that this language be included. While it's not enforceable, certainly staff and council members are going to be having conversations with school board members and the superintendent, talking about the project as it goes forward. As is pointed out in the record, as the permits for each of the steps in this process go forward, the planning department and staff have an opportunity to give comment and mold how the campus gets put together, and having this language in there while not enforceable certainly brings that conversation to the fore when we're talking about the fields. And I think it's important to send a message from the council to the school district and to our staff that we want to try to do a best available science and stay as current as we can to protect our natural resources. And just on a personal note, I want to thank Councilmember Hunt for her service on RIRA 8 and the dedication that she shows to this issue. I appreciate her bringing the best science to this discussion. Thank you.
Anybody else making a comment before we go to the vote?
I will reread the amendment. It is to add, "A Condition 58, the applicant is strongly encouraged to use materials for artificial turf fields that comply with best available science regarding detrimental effects on salmon habitat to protect environmental quality and to avoid materials containing 6 PPD quinine." Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one additional motion to make regarding a modification of a condition. This would modify Condition 45 and add some words to that condition, and I have shared this. So I will read with the modifications. Turbid runoff is not allowed to discharge to the Providence Point Private Detention System during and following construction. And then the condition goes on, and then in the, in a different part. Or other best management practices onsite during construction and following construction for any time prior to completion of the permanent stormwater system.
Is there a second? Councilmember DeMichele?
Second.
And Councilmember Hunt, would you like to speak to this one?
Thank you. Similar to my rationale on the first motion, we have comprehensive plan policy, which is one of our criteria, comprehensive plan consistency is one of our criteria for approval. And I do believe that this helps to also strengthen and make it clear that the turbid runoff is not allowed to discharge to the Providence Point Private Detention System, not just during the period of construction. That's, that's the point of this. As I understand it, this is consistent with the city code, so we do have a basis in code for, for this, which is IMC 13.28.025.A.26. So we have a basis in code for making this change, and it clarifies that even if construction stops, you cannot discharge that turbid water into the Providence Point Detention System. So I wanted to make that clarification, also because there seems to be some, there are some variables that are not yet decided as far as some of the phasing of the construction. And so I thought construction might potentially start and stop, and wanted to make sure that it was clear. At no point until the permanent system is there would you be allowed to, to do this.
That's great, thank you. Any other comments before we go for the vote? Okay. Oh, Deputy Council President?
Just real quick, then. I think this makes a lot of sense, and thank you very much for bringing forward this amendment. I'm not seeing any obvious reason why we would, why we wouldn't support this change, so I will be supporting it. Thanks.
Thanks. So the amendment is to add, modify Condition 45 to read, "Turbid runoff is not allowed to discharge the Providence Point Private Detention System during and following construction or other best management practice onsite during construction and following construction for any time prior to completion of the permanent stormwater system." All those in favor?
Sorry, Mayor, I just wanted to clarify because in my version, I have this dot, 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 but there is another part of that, so I don't know if the clerk needs to read the full.
Oh, sorry. I'll, I'll do that.
Okay.
"Turbid runoff is not allowed to discharge to the Providence Point Private Detention System during," with the words added, "and following construction." Jumping to the end of that section, "or other best management practices onsite during construction with the following wording added, and following construction for any time prior to completion of the permanent stormwater system." Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously, 7-0. And is there additional discussion, or are we ready for the vote on the main motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to point out that Section 1 of the resolution adopts the Development Commission findings, and because these two conditions differ from their finding and conclusions, we'd recommend amendment to just conform the Section 1 of the resolution to acknowledge the changes that were just made to the condition. So I'm going to put a proposed motion on screen to achieve that.
Thank you.
Just a moment here.
Is someone interested in making the top of the document on the screen? Make a motion.
And Mayor, if I could clarify real quickly, so essentially, this would just be putting in the body of the resolution, it would be recognizing the addition of these conditions. So it'd be saying that the council is adopting the Development Commission's findings with these revisions and incorporating them into the body of the resolution. So it may seem redundant, but it's, it's documenting the action that was just taken tonight, formalizing that in the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Thank you.
I believe there already was a motion. Do I need to restate that?
Per usual process, if a, a council member wouldn't mind formally reading the amendment.
Fantastic, I can do that. "I move to amend Section 1 of the draft resolution to adopt the Development Commission's findings, conclusions, and recommendations set forth in Exhibit A attached here, too, and incorporated herein by this reference with the following revisions thereto. Conditions of approval number 45 is revised to read, 'Turbid runoff is not allowed to discharge to the Providence Point Private Detention System during,' adding, 'and following construction. To protect the downstream private system, this project must provide a temporary bypass to runoff to a temporary surface water containment system like TES pond, Baker tank, et cetera, or other best management practice onsite during the construction, adding, 'and following construction for any time prior to completion of the permanent stormwater system. The best management practice shall be reviewed and approved during Site Work 1 permit.'" An additional condition of approval number 58 is added to read, "The applicant is strongly encouraged to use materials for artificial turf fields that comply with the best available science regarding detrimental effects on salmon habitat to protect environmental quality and to avoid materials containing 6 PPD quinine."
Is there a second? Deputy Council President?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This is a bit administrative. Okay, all in favor of this last amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The amendment carries. Thank you, city clerk. Any discussion before we vote on the main motion? Okay. "The motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-09, approving a master site plan, site development permit, and administrative adjustment of standards for the Issaquah School District Providence Height High School and Elementary School Campus Project with conditions, and adopting findings of fact and conclusions, has been moved and seconded." All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously, 7-0. I have checked in with our legal counsel to see about, having an opportunity to share a few thoughts with you, as I'm not a voting member of this particular decision, yet have served 20 years on the Development Commission and worked on many school district products. I am not overjoyed tonight. I'm actually upset. I feel like there is a missed opportunity here. The things that went well is the staff work on this was outstanding. The Development Commission work, big lift, bigger lift than I ever did, they did a great job. And what you did tonight was what you could do, which was decide if it met the code. But the code, to me, is not a visionary or an aspirational anything. It's a code. There's a huge lost opportunity here. I'm upset that we never talked about what this campus could do to bring our youth forward into the 21st century with something other than a stadium. I heard in the testimony that we were provided for this, somebody called having a stadium at every school equity. That's not. That's equal. Equity is making sure that all of the students in the school have opportunities for what they want to do, and not just the sporting community. That was probably the biggest elephant in the room for the community and the neighbors, never got touched. And it's no fault of the staff, it's no fault of the council. This is the way the system works. But we should have been able to look at something that was amazing and imaginary and forward-thinking, and we got a school from the 1970s. It just doesn't look or feel any different. I find that hugely disappointing. And I am not part of your voting body, but, and I share all the compliments you paid out tonight, but this is, this to me was not our best moment. Not that we could have done it differently, but this is not our best moment. What else for the end of the meeting? Okay. There being no other business this evening, the meeting is adjourned at 7:51.